Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Public Meetings Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, to start the night off, we have a proclamation that I will be reading. Whereas Finn, the beloved therapy dog of the Lenoka Harbor EMS, served our community with unwavering dedication and compassion, providing comfort and support to countless individuals in time of need. Whereas Finn's presence and gentle demeanor brought solace to patients, first responders, community members alike, demonstrating the remarkable healing power of therapy animals. And whereas Finn, contributions extended beyond the walls of EMS as he participated in community events, educational programs, outreach activities, and becoming a symbol of hope and resilience. Whereas Finn's owner Cathy Nagalo played an integral role in Finn's service, dedicating her time and effort to ensure Finn's well-being, effectiveness as a therapy dog, exemplifying the true spirit of volunteerism and community service. Whereas Cathy Nagalo, unwaveringly commitment and partnership with Finn have left an undeniable mark on our community, fostering an environment of care, compassion, and support. And whereas Finn, passing in a profound loss to Lenoka Harbor EMS and the entire community, his legacy of kindness, comfort, and service will continue to inspire us all. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Peggy Sue Giuliano, Mayor of Lacy Township, do on the behalf of myself and the Township Committee hereby honor, remember Finn, the Lenoka Harbor EMS therapy dog, for his extraordinary service and impact on our community. And be it further resolved that the governing body of the Township of Lacy extend our deepest gratitude and heartfelt condolences to Cathy Nagalo, recognizing her exceptional dedication and profound difference she and Finn have made in the lives of many. Thank you, Kathy. Invite the sibling up. Invite the other dog up.
Can we invite the sister up, please? Yes. This is Finn's sister.
That's not a dog, it's a horse.
She likes to show off a little bit.[208.34][208.34](laughter)
Peggy, turn the proclamation a little front there. There we go.
Can I get a couple comments from my committee men? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mayor. Full disclosure, I tell everybody everything I know. I'm a dog person. And my dog is, would look, that beautiful dog, and Finn, probably straight in the kneecap.
If that's...[262.48][262.48](laughter)
He's a tiny, he isn't Napoleon complex, but, you know, it's just a, and I remember meeting Finn and then tonight, the first time, Finn's sister. They have an effect on people. They bridge a gap, they break the ice, they comfort people who are nervous, they're a learning tool for our police and schools with children. So they play a role. They're for real. They're for real. Police that you know, say if they do a rescue, if they're a cadaver dog, they play a definite role. So beautiful animal. We're all animal people up here and dog owners, I believe. So it's a beautiful, beautiful night. Very well done, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Kennas?
I'm glad Lenoka Harbor EMS had a therapy dog. I didn't realize they did. It was a great benefit to the squad. And thank you for sharing your dog.
Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, every time I saw Kathy, I saw Finn. I don't care what anybody says, that's not a dog, that's a small horse.[332.66][332.66](laughter) And Finn, as we said in the proclamation, demeanor was just incredible. And I can't imagine if you're in trouble, here comes Finn. First, you'd be freaking out, okay? As this big dog goes running up to you. But then, his demeanor would make you relax and you get the help that you need. And thank you, Kathy, for all that you've done with Finn. There.
Thank you. Well, I just want to say, Kathy, it was an honor to know Finn. All of us felt the same way. And I know the whole community felt that way. And everybody reached out to me and it was like this, you know, this was a definite that we had to take care of and make sure he was recognized. I also wanted to share with you that I heard from Chief DeBella, and he sends his regards and just said he's so grateful for all the years that you brought Finn around to help when they needed help. So we appreciate that very much. Thanks, Kathy. One more round of applause.[386.63][386.63](applause) Okay. Special use permit, Trademark Dance Academy Car Wash on 8/18/2024.
Trademark Dance Academy is seeking permission to hold a car wash fundraiser. It will be taking place in their parking lot on Sunday, August 18th. Then it will be from 10:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m. with a rain date of August 25th at those same times.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Permission to post signage for the Lacy Soccer Club.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes.
That's all I have. Motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Move it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye. Okay. White guy already. Sorry. All right. Adequate notice of this meeting has been given in accordance with the Open Publics Meeting Act pursuant to the public laws of 1975. Said notice was advertised in the Asbury Park Press and the Beacon and was posted on the bulletin board showing the time and place of the meeting. Please rise for the salute to the flag and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before I get started, I just wanted to make this announcement so I don't forget to tell you that our August meeting has been changed to August 1st. It was August the 8th. We had to change it for some technicalities. So the meeting will take place on August 1st at 6 o'clock right here, just so I don't forget to share that information with you. Okay. First reading of ordinance 2024-18, amending Chapter 313 entitled Trees.
An ordinance attached to the township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey amending Chapter 313 entitled Trees. This is an ordinance that is mandated by the state and all municipalities are required to adopt it.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-198 on the adoption of ordinance 2024-15.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey on the adoption of ordinance 2024-15 in accordance with NJSA 40:55D-26.
Mayor, I'd ask that this resolution be placed on the agenda for this evening's governing body's consideration prior to the adoption of the ordinance 2024-15 and 2024-16. Both ordinances have to do with a change in zoning and development regulations within the Township of Lacy, in particular, those that are west of the Parkway or in the Pinelands area. The Land Use Act requires that any time a municipality entertains an ordinance that would change the development regulations or zoning regulations within a municipality, that it must first refer that ordinance to the planning board for its review as to consistency with the planning board, the master plan. The statute also requires that the planning board has 35 days in which to transmit to the governing body its recommendations with regard to the proposed ordinance or development regulations. The ordinances were referred to the Lacy Planning Board, the planning board did review them, and the planning board passed a resolution of denial of those particular proposed rules and regulations. There was never any specificity within the resolution as to why it didn't agree with the proposed regulations. And the Land Use Act further provides that the governing body, notwithstanding the recommendations of the Land Use Board, may continue to enact the ordinance provided it sets its reasons, sets forth the reasons in the minutes, and adopts those reasons by a full majority or a majority of the full membership, which would be three members of the governing body. So this resolution sets forth the reasons why, which would be contained in the minutes of the governing body if enacted tonight, as to why it disagrees with the Lacy Township Planning Board. Now, the reasons generally are the fact that these are state mandated regulations within the Pinelands area. They regulate stormwater activity in that area, and those regulations have been adopted by the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection and are referenced in the New Jersey Pinelands Comprehensive Management Plan. If the governing body did not go forward and change these regulations, it would not be consistent with the Pinelands Management, Comprehensive Management Plan, and it would be my opinion that it would therefore jeopardize the governing body or the township's ability to enforce anything in the Pinelands area. So to avoid that circumstance, and I don't think the planning board perhaps fully recognized that, this resolution sets forth those reasons which would allow the governing body to enact the ordinances that are scheduled for second reading.
Okay.
Need a motion on the...
We need a motion.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2024-15, amending Chapter 292 so as to be in compliance with the regulations of the New Jersey Pinelands Commission.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey amending and supplementing Chapter 292 of the Township Code entitled Stormwater Regulations for Pinelands Areas so as to be in compliance with the regulations from the New Jersey Pinelands Commission.
Again, this is consistent with the previous resolution that was adopted for the other ordinance. This would allow the governing body to move forward with enactment of the ordinance.
Move it.
Second.
Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Seeing none, make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion on the ordinance?
Second.
You're doing the resolution first, right?
No, we did that.
Okay, gotcha. I'm sorry.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-199 on the adoption of ordinance 2024-16.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey on the adoption of ordinance 2024-16 in accordance with NJSA 40:55D-26.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2024-16, amending Chapter 335 so as to be in compliance with the regulations of the New Jersey Pinelands Commission. Open the floor.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey amending and supplementing Chapter 335 of the Township Code entitled Zoning so as to be in compliance with the regulations from the New Jersey Pinelands Commission. Second reading, open the floor to public comment.
Yes.
Sure. Yes. It's okay. You can ask questions.
Barry Bender, somewhere in Lacy Township. Everybody in the audience is hearing you say these things and we don't have a clue about what's going on. What is, what is the, the changes that the state is doing that will affect us in regard to what's west of the Parkway? Is it really too detailed? I mean, if it is, I'm...
Yes, it is.
It's very detailed.
It's very, very detailed. The best way we're...
Can we get a Reader's Digest condensed version?
These are all posted in advance on our website, and they are also the best management practices that the New Jersey DEP adopts for Pinelands municipalities. So while we have the condensed version, there are also links in our ordinance that you have to refer back to the state agency. I mean, it's like, the Pinelands Comprehensive Management Plan is huge.
So if you went into it, people would still be looking with blank stares like what we're talking about?
Yes, yes. Because we even look at blank stares.
That's, that's the only reason I raised my...
Okay, so they amended the tables, they did new groundwater recharge standards, the runoff quantity standards for that, calculation of stormwater runoff and groundwater recharge.
Yeah, in fact, if I'm not mistaken, we even had the township engineer review the ordinance to make sure that everything...
It's mostly related to drainage in the Pinelands.
Drainage?
All right. Thanks very much.
No problem.
Anyone else?
Anyone else from the floor?
Seeing none, make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Second reading of ordinance 2024-17, amending Chapter 273 entitled Property Maintenance.
An ordinance of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey amending Chapter 273 of the Township Code of the Township of Lacy entitled Property Maintenance and Establishing New Article 4 entitled Lead-Based Paint Hazard Inspection Requirements for Rental Dwellings. The state now requires that all rental units be inspected for lead-based paint, so we're just writing that into our code.
Move it.
So open the floor.
Second reading, open the floor.
Any comment from the public?
Seeing none, make a motion to close.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-200, authorizing various promotions.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing various appointments, promotions, and lateral changes in the CWA clerical unit and the Teamsters Blue Collar Unit for the Township of Lacy pending promotional procedures by the Civil Service Commission. We have Laura Dawson being promoted to Clerk 4, Corinne Vincenzi promoted to Clerk 2, Ryan Horn promoted to Coordinator of Scheduling of Recreational Activities, Margaret Jones promoted to Clerk 2, Thomas Boyd promoted to Road Repairer, Joseph Linky promoted to Maintenance and Repair, and Jeffrey Posqua promoted to Public Works Supervisor.
Move it.
I do believe we have a few of those ladies and gentlemen here if they'd like to stand up.
Just stand up, at least, all those that are being...[1046.08][1046.08](applause)
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes, and congratulations. Resolution 2024-201, authorizing the appointment of a construction code official.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the appointment of James Peters as a construction code official for the Township of Lacy. Civil Service sent the approval, so now we are going to put the resolution in place.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-202, authorizing a leave of absence in the Police Department.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing a leave of absence for Mark Cuciello.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-203, authorizing a leave of absence in the Police Department.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing a leave of absence for Nicole Tamboro.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-204, authorizing a leave of absence for the Department of Community Development.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing a leave of absence for Corinne Vincenzi.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-205, authorizing a leave of absence for administration.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing a leave of absence for Kimberly Bassioni.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-206, accepting the resignation of a police dispatcher.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey accepting the resignation of Linda Gavin as a dispatcher for the Lacy Township Police Department.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-207, author, I'm sorry, authorizing participation in the New Jersey Coastal Coalition.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the participation in the New Jersey Coastal Coalition for the Township of Lacy.
Move it.
Second.
This is a, this is an organization, they meet monthly, it's a free membership to discuss challenges presented by flooding, and they work with groups such as FEMA, DEP, and the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-208, authorizing a Chapter 159 in the municipal budget, alcohol, education, rehab, and enforced fund.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2024 municipal budget, Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87. This is money that the state collects from DWI fines, and then we get a prorated portion, and we are putting it towards education, rehab, and enforce.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-209, authorizing a Chapter 159 in the municipal budget, Lacy Soccer Club donation.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey providing for the insertion of a special item of revenue and appropriation in the 2024 municipal budget, Chapter 159 of the Township of Lacy pursuant to NJSA 40A:4-87. The soccer club is making a donation in the amount of $109,366,000 for the purchase and installation of a turf field.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-210, awarding a contract for the installation of an artificial turf field.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a state contract for the purchase and installation of an artificial turf surface for the athletic field use to Field Turf USA. This is in the exact amount that the soccer club is donating.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-211, adopting an athletic field use policy.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey adopting an athletic field use policy for the management and use of athletic fields within the township. This is to update our current policy to include provisions for the new turf field.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-212, awarding a contract for roofing services for the Lenoka Harbor EMS building.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey awarding a contract to North Star Roof Services LLC for roof renovations for the Lenoka Harbor EMS building. This is in the amount of $32,040. This was as approved in the 2024 capital budget.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-213, authorizing an agreement with the County of Ocean Law Enforcement Training Facility.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the execution of a memorandum of understanding with the County of Ocean for utilization of the Ocean County Sheriff's Law Enforcement Training Facility.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-214, authorizing the release of performance bond to NW Barnegat Pines Phase 1.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the release of a performance guarantee posted for the Northwest Barnegat Pines Phase 1 Road Improvement Project. The township engineer advised the township to release the performance bond based on inspections and the completion of the project.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-215, authorizing the release of the performance bond for Lacy Retail Center.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the release of a site improvement performance guarantee for the Lacy Retail Center Phase 2.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Curatola?
Yes.
Mr. Kennas?
Yes.
Mayor Giuliani?
Yes. Resolution 2024-216, authorizing the release of a performance bond for 420 South Main Street Phase 1.
Resolution of the Township of Lacy County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the release of a performance bond for 420 South Main Street LLC Phase 1.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-217 authorizing the release of a performance bond and a maintenance bond permit 4924.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the release of the performance and maintenance bonds posted by Clevenger Excavation LLC for road opening permit number 4924.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-218 authorizing the placement of a lien on block 191 lot 3.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey accepting the certification of the Director of Public Works concerning the costs incurred in the removal of debris and cleaning up of the property located at block 191 lot 3 and authorizing the placement of a lien against said property for said costs. This is in the amount of $159.40.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-219 authorizing the refund of monies charged for municipal dock slip.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the release of monies charged for a municipal dock slip. We are refunding on a prorated amount. The resident used it for two months and is no longer in need of it, so we are refunding him for the rest and then we are moving somebody up from the waiting list.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-220 authorizing the refund of deposit monies.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the refund of deposits held for the use of municipal facilities.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Resolution 2024-221 authorizing the payment of township bills.
Resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey authorizing the payment of township bills. This is in the amount of $7,789,958.34.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes, noted abstention on 58R 5890.
Yes, and I have an abstention T 0035.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Monthly reports.
Okay. For the month of June, the Department of Community Development collected receipts in the amount of $46,071. Municipal Clerk's Office for the month of June collected receipts in the amount of The municipal court for the month of June collected, excuse me, the month of May collected receipts in the amount of $22,117.83. For the month of June, for the Department of Public Works, they, road opening permits in the amount of $2,025, recycling commodity in the amount of $1,051, and truck parking in the amount of $219, no, excuse me, $1,000, and $219 for the disposal of tires that we collected from people dropping tires off. Motion to accept the report is read.
Move it.
Second.
On my favor.
Aye.
Motion to approve the caucus minute meetings from June 13, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve the township minute meetings from June 13, 2024.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Motion to approve executive session minute meetings from June 13, 2024.
Move it.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Do you have any add-ons?
I do, I have an add-on. Resolution 2024-223, resolution of the Township of Lacey County of Ocean State of New Jersey appointing Christopher Kenny as emergency management coordinator for the Township of Lacey.
Move it.
Second.
Mr. Kuratolo?
Yes.
Mr. Kennis?
Yes.
Mr. McDonald?
Yes.
Mayor Juliana?
Yes. Okay. Resolution, oh, I don't know if you, yeah. All right. I didn't know whether there was something else I had to run there. I'll take the comments from the committee, Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Start out a pleasantry tonight. Appreciate the mayor. You know, she reached out to me and I was, for the first time, 11 years on committee, I was able to not attend the high school graduation, rather the eighth grade graduation. It was pretty neat. I was in the same spot on the field and the young kids were excited. The teachers and the administration were there, so it was a pleasant evening. And like I said, I've been to several at the high school level and when I've been mayor, but this was a treat, so I want to congratulate those families that all had a hand in the graduation and the raising of those young children. They're good, good people. I got a text about two weeks ago from Assemblyman Rumpf of the 9th District, all. Assemblyman Rumpf, Senator Amato, Assemblyman Meyer were at Pheasant Run speaking about issues that affect all of us and not only our seniors. And some of them were, that they talked about were opposing the state budget, rejecting natural gas increase, protecting elders from financial exploitation. I want to commend our police department several times over the past few years. The chief has gone out, in particular, Pheasant Run, and he's conducted a senior scam seminar. And it was quite an education for everybody. So there was a robust question and answer period with the 9th District. They, oftentimes, I speak about them up here because they're right on Lacey Road and they advocate for all of us and all of our municipalities, and in particular, right here at home in Lacey. I read something pretty interesting on July 3rd. Tom's River School District sues the state over lack of sufficient education funding. I think several other districts should join in. There is strength in numbers. I do think there's a case to be made there and that that funding was pulled with, that was really arbitrary and it was very unfortunate. So I'll be watching that and reporting here in the future, but hopefully our, our powers that be are on it and they'll, they'll have some discussion about it. And I'd like to close, if I could. Part of what I do at Ocean County Health is transition people into, into care and give access to care for those that are underprivileged, uninsured, or underinsured, so for our veterans in town. This is pretty good. It's new, it's happening here in Ocean County. It's not happening anywhere else that I know of. So Ocean Inc. down at 40 Washington Street in Tom's River has a Veterans Transportation Program and provides monetary credit to the Veterans Easy Ride Account. Once approved, they can book Uber and Lyft rides for medical appointments, grocery, retail shopping, military, organizational, and social, and any other community events. Spouse of the veteran and family of the veteran is able to ride as well. So some of the actuarial tables and things that we work with at county health, talk about something as simple as a ride is why veterans can't access care. So I do have a contact number here. Anybody with interest in this or knows a veteran in their family, please reach out General, the Veterans Transportation Coordinator is Carmine Zapala, C-Z-A-P-L-A. Again, 732-496-3704. And I thank you for the time tonight, Mayor. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Mr. Kennis?
Thank you, Mayor. Just one public service announcement from my mother. This is a reminder that the Schoolhouse Museum is open Saturdays from 10 to 12. So if you've never been there or you're looking for something to do with your kids or get out of the heat, the Schoolhouse Museum is open Saturdays all summer from 10 to 12. And their air conditioning works better than ours does. Those are my comments.
Thank you, Mr. Kennis. Mr. McDonald?
Thank you, Mayor. I don't know if you read it in the paper. We got an email about it that the 9th District, Senator Amato, Assemblyman Rumpf, Assemblyman Meyer voted against the New Jersey budget, which is a good thing because the budget stinks. It's not any good. So as Senator Amato said to me one time, they have no common sense in Trenton. So I'm happy about that. And the other thing, it's a word of caution, one of my golfing buddy's mother was clipped for about $3,000 and got caught up in the grandson, granddaughter, I need money because I wrecked the car, et cetera, type thing. And the best thing you can do for that is get a key word to your grandchildren, whether it's green or blue or something along that, that if they ever get in a position like that and they have to call you, they mention that key word so you know it's them. Okay? So, Mayor, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Well, I have a couple of things. First of all, I'd like to take a minute and just congratulate all those that moved up the ladder, as they say, you know, very happy for all of you and congratulations, and I look forward to working with you. The other thing I'd like to say is that I went to the Ocean Gate Parade on the 4th of July. I had the honor of being in a fire chief's vehicle from Lenoka Harbor. Forkett River was there too, but Lenoka Harbor took me in their truck with them. And what an honor it was to be there, to see all, and it was like an old fashioned kind of parade. It really was very cute. It's only like literally maybe two streets long, but our trucks were there showing off, so I was very proud to have them there, that's for sure. On a different note, I, I'm, I've talked about this before. I know the men get annoyed with me about this, but I always speak my mind, so it's something I will continue to do. Fireworks. We have lost over 4,000 acres in the Wharton area because of fireworks, not from a person with a fire or, you know, an accident. These were fireworks, illegal fireworks. They are a problem and I wish there was something we could do. New Jersey's just passed too many it's okay kind of laws and somewhere down the line, it's got to stop because they're getting out of control. Just my little public service announcement. And then I wanted to share some good news with you. Oh, before I do that, I wanted to just tell you that our fire, volunteer firemen and women, they made 86 calls last month. Eighty-six calls. Our two fire companies. So take that into consideration. Again, I say it all the time, they are volunteers. Let's always remember that. Okay, and here's a little good news for a change. Last night I attended the MUA meeting, Municipal Authorities Meeting, which I am the liaison to, so I go every month. Over the past two years, the Ocean County Utilities Authority has raised their bulk sewerage rate, which is passed on to the Lacey Municipal Utilities Authority. In 2024, the bulk rate increased from 4,120 per gallon, million gallons, which cost LMUA The bulk rate increased in, will increase for 2025, will go up to 4,202 per million gallon, which will cost the MUA a little less than that number, okay? So I'm just, just trying to give you an idea here. In total, an increase of $120,000 from the Ocean County Utilities Authority has been charged to the Lacey MUA. But instead of passing that on to increase the rate payers here in Lacey, the Lacey MUA is absorbing this increase. So it's just another thank you to them to say they see that we're, you know, struggling and they don't want to give us anymore to struggle with. So again, appreciation to them. But that's it. And again, I'll just remind you that our August meeting is on August 1st here. That's all I have. Now I will open it up to the public. Go right ahead, Ms. DeSenza. Just tilt it down maybe.
I'll just have to talk louder.
You can take it out of the stand.
I was just going to say, take it out.
Regina DeSenza, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. I have a couple of questions first about item 17. Where is that artificial turf field being installed? Which park?
It's going in Yale Park at the middle hockey rink.
Yale Park.
So the hockey, you know where the skateboard park is?
Yeah.
The one right next to it, where it's going, there's, Lacey Roller Hockey has been defunct for a couple of years. We've given them many opportunities to restructure, they have not.
So it'll be fenced off?
Yeah, exactly the way it is right now. It's going to be still enclosed in that area.
Okay, good. I wanted to know about that. Now, items 22 and 23, the release of the performance bonds for the Lacey Retail Center, which I believe is the Home Depot property. How long has that money been held?
It's not money, it's probably paper, like a letter of credit.
A paper performance bond?
Yes.
Okay, but I'd like to know how old they are because I thought phase one was completed a long time ago.
It probably wasn't, it probably just got lost through the tracks getting an engineer letter.
Like 20 years?
It's not 20 years.
15?
Well, it could, I mean.
It could if they didn't finish.
And they didn't ask for it back, or?
Nope. And that's really the policy, is that the developer's supposed to ask for it back. It's not for us to contact them.
I was just curious if it was all the way back, and it probably was. Okay. Thank you, Mrs. Juliana, for mentioning some of the things that happened last night at the MUA meeting. It is true that $120,000 more is being charged by the OCUA for sewer rates and the commissioners did vote to absorb the cost. But what I would like to focus on is the $560,000 they gave to the township last year and the $420,000 they're giving this year, the $980,000 total, okay? Which was given to the Board of Education via the township. And I had asked that that not be done again. That money was stolen legally from the water rate payers to bail out the sinking financial ship over at the Lacey School District because next year, there's going to be an identical problem. And last night, it was also mentioned that there's 14,000 water rate payers. Divided by $980,000 means that $70 per water rate payer was taken from us over the past two years. There are people sitting in this room that can't afford their water bills, that can't afford their taxes, and the school district's taking 9.9% from us. Now, I know a lot of people got upset, there was even foot stomping and hand slapping on the tables because most of what Mr. Bidnick says here and at the Board of Education is the cold, hard truth that nobody wants to hear. I have one last comment. On Monday, August 12, at 6:30 PM, the planning board will be having a very serious discussion about recommendations on cooperative, sober, living facilities slash rooming houses, also known as group homes. So if anyone in this town has anything to say about a group home, you better get to the planning board meeting because I can't sit there by myself month after month.
I would like to comment on that last. It is not a serious discussion from the planning board. I sit on the seat, but it is a, it is a discussion on, she's correct, on boarding houses and rooming homes. We do this periodically where a court case is, is settled in New Jersey and other towns and we take a, we relook at our local ordinances to see if we can either, you know, add or remove sections in our ordinances that would, that would protect us, correct. So we may do nothing, we will take the, you know, under advisement from other board members, but it's not anywhere near the level of alarm that Mrs. DeSenza expressed tonight.
Is there anybody else from the public? Yes. Before you begin, Tony, I'd just like to say that I, after speaking to you the other night, I spoke to Veronica about it. We've got to figure out another way to do the dropdown to get, to be able, for people to be able to get in there a little easier.
Well, that's one of the things I was going to say. Anybody here know what resolution or ordinances and what they're talking? Okay, my, I just saw, the mayor just said. I made a recommendation that somewhere on the website, and I also spoke to the township clerk, and I understand that we change things right up to the last minute. But if there's a place on the website where we could put it up tentatively as a disclaimer that this is the subject matter that the ordinance or the resolution is going to address in general, then people here know whether they should come or not. That's all, to speak their mind about. That's all I was, you know, just trying to make more transparency. That's all for, for you guys and for the taxpayer. Speaking of transparency, can I address Mr. Kennis from the planning board for a second?
Well, I'd act.
Okay. I have some experience with halfway houses, okay? And I just wanted to give you that. When the guy who's now a senator for us, Mr. Cory Booker, was mayor of Newark, okay? I was in a position to hire people out of halfway houses, okay? And give them jobs over illegal aliens because they were US citizens and I felt obligated to employ US citizens over illegal aliens. So I did it. And he was, wanted to make a thing about that and I told him he could take his minions and go someplace else. Anyway, provisions that I had in hiring, you may want to consider, number one, if you're going to hire people out of rural areas, southern state, penitentiaries, no rapists, no arsonists, no violent crime people. Anybody else, fine, if they're in a halfway house, must be employed and must be drug tested continuously and kept us informed that it's being done. So when and if they are in our residence, in our areas, we know that these people may have had minor crimes. And now, maybe drug possession or something that's now legal, they're getting out, they got to serve another six months, eight months, whatever. But if the provisions are there in that halfway house that these are minor, minor crime violators, nobody that people should be really afraid of, and we put that into stipulations of the people, I'm just, I'm not saying that we.
We're getting the court before.
We're putting a court before, see, this gets brought up and it's now, you know, now on TV. We do these, anything land use related that might, might change in township goes to the planning board first, not the township committee. So the planning board discusses it and they do, you know, make recommendations and stuff like that. And then it, then it goes back to us and then we decide whether we want to adopt those, like we did tonight. We decide whether we want to adopt those. The, the boarding house thing came up through the zoning board, not the planning board, with a list of recommendations that they thought we might want to take a look at. So that's how it started. So, and your comments in particular should be going before the planning board, which is also a public meeting, like Mr. DeSenza said. So that's where those comments would be.
No, I understand that, but unfortunately, I'm, may not be available for that. I know you're on the planning board and that's why I said, can I address it?
If you have comments for that, I would appreciate you putting an email and sending them.
If I can make it, I will make those same comments.
Email is okay as well.
The last time I was here, I, I asked if we could have a little more in advance information for the public about what newspapers we use.
Okay, so that's another thing I'm checking into right now. We've discussed, we, we possibly were going to post it in the Asbury, the Atlantic City[1575.01] We've discussed, we possibly are going to post it in the Asbury, the Atlantic City Press as, because the Beacon, that's what the water company does, and that's how they cover themselves.
Yeah, well, we have three newspapers that we legally adopt in January, which is the Beacon-
Yeah, in January, we'd have to do it.
And there's a stat, there's an outline in the statute as to the newspapers that you use. So we're legally using all the correct newspapers. And again, so the Beacon is the recognized newspaper. It still is published, and until the New Jersey Legislature changes how we have to publish public notices, it is done in the proper newspaper.
Okay, and we can't buy it in town?
I don't know what to tell you about that. That's not, it's still-
Yes, you can. This is-
That's not a recognized newspaper by the guides of the New Jersey statute.
I don't understand that. I mean, this new, this document is quoting our deputy mayor and is also quoting Mr. Barry Bender, one of our reputable citizens.
Mr. Connors will explain to you the statute.
Please.
Tony, would you, give me a copy of that. Let me, thank you.
I just want to get the transparency out, that's all. Okay? I mean, this quotes the governor, the guy with the fake hair in the front, you know? And it's also quoting, it's also quoting that guy who was mayor in Newark at the time. And maybe that's why, I don't know. Maybe it has politics to do with it. And they got an op piece in there, but it doesn't have a Republican op piece, it just has Democratic op. I hate them all anyway.
Let me just check this out specifically.
If you could, because that-
I can just tell you, and again, this is just an anecdotal story, but during the time that I served on the Senate Community and Urban Affairs Committee, the issue of publication in newspapers had come up. And one of my colleagues from Burlington County had actually introduced legislation that would permit one, I think it was called the Pine Barrens? Anyone? To allow the Pine Barrens, which was a newspaper like this, to be considered a publication for notices. And the Press Association had come out, and as you can imagine, and made a big stink about not allowing that to be recognized, but for theirs to be recognized. And there was quite a dialogue that, and needless to say, the bill never passed. Let me see what the status of it is and then-
If you would. Again, it's only for more transparency for the taxpayer.
Absolutely. And any other thing is, is, you know, certainly, and this is my editorial, this is not the governing body speaking, but it's nice to be able to take care and recognize those types of publications that are trying to be part of the community. Because my argument at the time, contrary to the likings of the Press Association, was the Asbury Park Press, if anybody buys that paper, which I don't anymore-
Or you can get the information online about the meetings and everything too.
Well, but the problem is, you read the Asbury Park Press, and there's hardly any articles about Ocean County, it's all about Monmouth County. And so when the Press Association, which was speaking largely on behalf of the Asbury Park Press, was telling about how it's important for their paper to be, I said, "I can read more in a Pine Barrens newspaper than I can your Asbury Park Press." And so you're right about circulation and transparency.
It has to be paid circulation, Chris.
Yeah.
So that's part of the laws, that it has to have, it has to be a paid circulation. That's free.
No, it is free. I picked it up at a bagel shop in a local, here in town.
The New Jersey law says it has to be a paid circulation.
Yeah, they want you to pay, yeah. The Press Association wants you to have to pay for information that we might be able to get to you for nothing.
Well, the thing is, if I, if I have a computer, I'm fortunate enough that I went and I learned how to use it, and I can get the information from the Asbury Park Press about the Board of Education meetings and about the Township Committee meetings, but not everybody in town has the same abilities that I do. And maybe a little younger than me and maybe not have those abilities. So I'm just saying, that's a poor argument because you can get it free now anyway.
That's what, right. But that's the argument that the Asbury Park Press, through their Press Association, is trying to make. That somehow, but not everybody has a computer. They would have to get in a car, go down to the library, and it may or may not be open. And so somehow, they saw that easier than being a-
Pushing a button.
Yes, so, but let me check and see what the status of it is.
I appreciate that. And again, it really doesn't have to be done till January anyway, when you put out your list.
You can't change it if the law doesn't allow me to change it.
No, I understand that, but if we don't make the, you know, the squeaky wheel gets the oil.
So this is free, I'm going to give it back. I have to buy my own computer.
You can keep, you can keep, that's right, you can have that. I have a question, I have a question. Does a absentee, absentee vote by a member of the dais-
Abstention?
Abstention considered a vote?
It depends.
On what it is.
And I haven't committed to memory because there are case law that talks about, it depends upon what the abstention was for. Whether it was for, to avoid a conflict, or was the person just simply not voting. And so it depends upon whether the abstention goes with the majority vote, the a's or n's.
All right. I was just asking because we have, we have four here, two abstained tonight from something.
Two different items, though, two different items, not the same item.
Still doesn't give you a quorum if it doesn't count.
Well, it's the majority of those voting.
Okay, so that's why I'm asking.
Now, there are some actions in the statute that require a certain number of votes. So it's not always just the majority of those that are present. You can have a majority of three members here, and two of the three vote, but it may not comply depending upon what the specific vote for that particular action requires.
Yeah, I was just curious because there's four here, two abstained.
The land use resolution.
Two abstained for two different items. They voted for the bills, but abstained on two different vendors.
I understand.
Which left three other committee people to vote yes.
Take it easy. I'm not upset. I'm just, it's in the question.
I'm trying to explain it to you.
No, I understand, I understand. I was just curious.
Vote's still carries.
I even got the lawyer laughing, come on. All right. Something not so funny. I happened to coach soccer with kids for lots of years, okay? Even got my indoor shoes on. We changed, now we have a turf field inside what used to be a rink. That's basically an indoor, indoor field, it's not an outdoor field, because 80 by 120 is an outdoor field. So it's confined. My question is, you changed the rules on who could use it. I have been involved in a couple of instances where people, because it's a public park, came to the park and wanted to use it, "Hey, wait a minute. I'm from the club, I have the right to use it before you just walk on. Whether you speak English or not, it's my right, not yours." So my request is, is in your language of who can use that turf, somewhere it's posted, and it's posted, so somebody who has to enforce it-
That guy.
Okay? When he gets a call on the phone that they won't clear out and I have the right to use it, can go and say, "No, they have a permit, they are scheduled." Because I don't want to see fistfights at Gillie Park, and I've seen it in other towns.
So this is under recreation, this falls under recreation.
I understand that. It's, the people I'm talking about don't care about recreation or your committee or our government.
The decision's still going to be locked.
Hold on, Tony. Resolution 2024-211, adopting an athletic field use policy. Jim has made some changes under our direction so that this works out as smoothly as possible. We're going to have some conflict, we know that going forward. But for the most part, Jim has done a very fine job in making sure that the conflicts will be as minimal as possible.
Yeah, I could see it coming, though, and I'm just, you know, I just wanted, I don't want to see people throwing fists, that's all. Because it happens.
It currently happens on our grass fields.
All right.
Same thing happens on our grass fields.
I know, I know, I've been there, I've been part of it. Okay, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Tony. Is there anyone else from the, come on up, sir? Just state your name, please.
My name is Pat Colola, Kayla Dreyf. I hate to take up your time with this, but I think you guys are my last hope. I've got an issue in front of my driveway on the street. The street is sinking. I've been to the road department, I've spoken to the Township Administrator. They've, they came last year and ripped up the street in front of my driveway, repaved it, but didn't raise it. My, my side of the street is about three and a half inches lower than the other side of the street, and it's still sinking. I, I just don't know what else to do. They came down, came down two weeks ago, three weeks ago with the surveyor. He said he was going to come and shoot, shoot it again. I went to the road department the day before yesterday and asked when this was going to happen, and they told me that there was no work order to do this. I just don't know what to do.
Well, it's, it's a process.
I did not bring my file with me. I had the whole entire file, I did, because he didn't show up at the last meeting, so I didn't bring the file, but Casey-
Because I didn't show up because they said they were going to come down and-
There is work that's going to be done there, I believe. I don't, I don't have the file with me, I don't remember. I apologize, I don't remember.
And it's also, it's also a safety issue because in the winter, my side of the street is so much lower than the other side of the street. When it floods, it freezes over. And it's icy, and there've been-
We could set up a meeting so you can meet with myself and Mr. Parker, and if the mayor would like to attend, that would be fine, and we'll explain it to you because Mr. Parker did go out and shoot it, and it's, it's, it's done correctly. But we can set up a meeting, I just don't have the file with me.
It's done, it's three and a half inches or four inches lower than-
There is, there's an engineer explanation for it, I'm not the technical person. But again, if you, if you'd like to call the office, and I know I have spoken to you, and I did refer it to Public Works and our project coordinator, and they have been out, I believe they've come out and talked to you, this might be the second or third time they've talked to you and explained it to you, but we'll be happy to explain it again.
Sure.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else from the public?
I'm going to go in a little different direction because I've been coming to these meetings for quite a few months now, and I noticed one thing is missing. And that is, most of the meetings, even when you talk to people around town, seeing your friends and stuff, when they do watch the meetings, they talk about the negativity at the meetings. Well, I know myself, my family, now that I've got grandchildren, we're going into the sixth generation in this town. Many of us love the town. The one thing people don't come up here and talk about enough is the positive things that go in town. Nothing is perfect. There's not a place in this world that's perfect.
That's for sure.
And there's always room to improve. We all know that. Because I'll tell you what, the one thing that I really, really am thankful for, in these meetings, I'm not only learning from you people up there, I'm learning things from the ordinance too, things that are brought to it. So it's a learning experience on both sides. But with that, for the majority of people I know, I want to thank not only the committee, the workers, the town workers in this town, the residents, the volunteers, and all the organizations. Because overall, Lacey Township is a wonderful place to live-
That's for sure.
-and to bring up your families, and everybody as a whole. Whether you agree with things or not, everybody's looking to improve the township, which is something, change, as we know, is inevitable.
Happens, that's it.
You know, we've got to work together the best we can, but overall, I've got to say thank you to everybody because we're all in this together, residents, the schools, everybody.
That's right.
And it's a fantastic place to be because otherwise, so many people wouldn't be coming here.
That's for sure.
And I say that from the bottom of my heart because now, I'm bringing up grandchildren in this town. So thank you to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Some positivity for change.
You're here.
Hi, how are you?
Hi. Hi, I'm Denise.
And last name, please?
Becaro.
Thank you.
In spelling?
Nope.
Okay, great. Um, hello, everybody. Thank you for helping us understand certain things that we really don't understand because obviously, there's a lot of people and a lot of stories and a little confusion. So sometimes you have to explain things once and twice, you know that. The first thing is, I don't know who I speak to to get on the committee, committee for the budget. I know there's a CFO, so, and I believe it was the last meeting-
There's no, we don't-
Well, there's a person who handles our budget.
She's our chief financial officer.
Chief financial, yes, CFO, right?
Yes.
Yes, that's right.
She doesn't have a committee.
We don't have a committee.
This is her committee.
This is where the committee.
Okay. Well, I know there was, I believe, last meeting that this person, I believe Steve, if I'm correct, I could be wrong. Okay, you remember, it was Steve. He had some questions about the budget.
Right.
So I know you were going to have a meeting.
He's never called me to have the meeting.
Okay, well, I'm asking you.
Okay.
Okay, I'm a bookkeeper. I would love to sit down with you or whoever. I don't know how it works, that's why I'm here, to ask you first step, what do I do? Besides an email and a phone call.
And what is it you want to do?
I like to look at the budget.
Right?
It's available online.
It's a, it's all-
Yeah, I was trying to find a lot of it. I didn't have too much-
It's one big, like, 40-page document.
But that's okay, I still like, I'm a, I'm a person, person, person to speak to you, see the numbers, ask the questions, how is this determined? And I'm, I'm sure you have your answers, which is fine, but then I can go back to, again, some of my neighbors and give the right answers, the correct answers.
Okay.
And again, this is taxpayers' money, and I'd just like to have it-
Why don't you review the budget, the annual financial statement, the audit, the annual debt statement, the budget, and prepare your questions, and then we can meet so we, and give us your questions so we can meet and have a very constructive meeting.
The budget's a very, you know-
Because we might have to ask you to come back another time or something like that because we, again, there's volumes and volumes of documents that we might have to gather to answer your questions or back into because, you know, worksheets and stuff like that, which worksheets are not public documents on how we came to the document is what you see online. So if you want to look at the documents, prepare your questions, send them to us, we can get answers, and then we can meet.
Okay.
If, would you like us to, if you can't get to them, we can email you the budget, if you'd like.
Yeah, I was having a little hard time getting, finding everything. And I didn't know how old it was and how accurate it was.
It's January.
It's January, since January.
Okay, maybe that's why.
So before, before you leave tonight, give us your email, okay?
Sure.
All right?
Veronica, if you still have it, but that's okay, I'll still give it to you.
I might.
That's all right, don't go crazy. I'll give it to you in two seconds. All right, that's perfect. Also, you know, I live down by Beach Boulevard, you know the park story. I'm not going to get into everything because there's so many issues that I don't really want to get into right now. But my little concern is the benches that we have there. I know we have certain rules and regulations, and we spent a lot of money, but I'd really like to ask each and every one of you, has anybody been to the park?
Wait, I go to the park every day almost, so I'm there all the time. Well, we're, there's new benches ordered, just to answer your question about-
New benches ordered, okay.
Yes, yes.
Can you elaborate on the kind?
Different than what you have now, so it's going to be something, it's going to be more, I'm going to use the word, like a composite wood or something like that, that's, yes, not something where the salt air is going to erode the rubberized material on them. Yes.
Are you doing anything about the prettiness of the, um-
Yes, we are too.
About the prettiness of the-
It's all on our agenda.
Oh, that's already, we've already, it's going to be powder coated and painted.
I'm just based on that, but I want to make sure that-
We are all on agenda on this.
That, this will be the third time that we're redoing that gazebo because of the salt air destroying the metal.
I know. It's just that, you know what, unfortunately, we spend a lot of money, not we, everybody in town, the Dallas, Jersey Shore, spend a lot of money to have each town look prettier than the next, you know? Or have inviting guests than the next. And I went through Berkeley, you know, I, I'm looking, I have suggestions, but I'm very happy on that you already went to that step because that's basically what I wanted. And we're inlet is, and Beach Boulevard, you know where the gate is? Probably you open and close the gate all the time. Can we have something of a safety walk, you know, for, for people walking, crossing, some kind of lines or slow down or something for people to say?
Okay, so just-
We're crossing, we've got babies here.
You want to crosswalk across the entranceway to the park or on the road?
On the road.
Is that our road or the county road, Rob?
That's our road, it's the, that's where county roads come, in North Jersey.
What?
Yes. Okay.
So what half is ours?
The problem is, where the entrance to the gate is actually the center of the inlet. So there's no-
Yes, yes.
-direct line to take to run to that gate.
Right.
You know, so you, it's like you would do it probably at the, actually, probably the southern side of the inlet to run it over, because that is our road over there.
So what is that, a couple feet away? But it's not as simple as that. My, my point is, yeah, just to get the safety of the children, older people walking, dogs.
We understand all that, but you know, it's just not as simple as everybody thinks it is when you do it.
No, I know. That's why we're asking.
You know what I'm saying?
I'm only asking, that's why I'm here.
Yep.
I don't like to get, hear from everybody.
Right.
I'm asking you to tell me-
It's something we'll look into.
What does that consist of?
Right.
And what big deal, or not a big deal, how much is it going to cost, right, left? I didn't know exactly.
Yeah, the cost isn't the problem, it's satisfying the manual and uniform traffic control devices to do it properly in accordance with the federal manual so that you don't set the town up for litigation and to be sued. If we had to crosswalk in the wrong location, somebody gets killed, the town's liable.
Right, right.
So that's what, that's the biggest thing to worry about because they have to be located at particular points.
So who works on this and who?
We would have to pay our engineer to do that. There's nobody here who has that knowledge and who's an engineer. So we would pay our outside engineer to look into that and to research that to see if it could be done.
Okay, so we can get an engineer to do this?
If the committee authorizes me to spend the money, you know?
Okay, so-
Nothing is cheap.
Typically, this stuff occurs during our budget meetings. Our budget meetings occur March, March and April.
In the February, March.
They're open to the public. That's usually when all these, I don't call them wish list items, but-
Yes.
Wish list items, yeah. Wish list items go, and, and that's when they're presented by the department heads, the public is more than welcome to present their wish list items too, and that's when we go through what we can afford and, you know, stuff like that.
That's fine. That's a perfect answer. That's all I needed was just the A, B, C's, and C's, and that's it. I appreciate your time, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for down the road.
For speaking to us so nicely too.
But thank you.
I do have your email address, is this still the Yahoo one?
Correct.
I got it.
Okay, thanks.
Anyone else from the public?
Hi.
Hi Kelly, how are you?
I'm Erica. My name is Kelly Sminkowski, also on Beach Boulevard. Um, I just brought with me, um, some flyers from, uh, Marneke Bay Partnership, and it's , uh, native plants for New Jersey. You can actually put your backyard or your dress in, and it tells you what you should be putting in your backyard that is, is good for our area. So if anyone's interested in them, I have them. Um, there were also a couple of things. Last month I emailed and I asked, uh, some of the committee if they were interested in coming to visit me, um, because I have a bird's eye view from my home of both sides, the town side and the, um, private side of Beach Boulevard. And some of you were very kind and, and came, and I don't think that I harassed anyone, so.
You got to leave the house.
But I didn't hear from others, and you are more than welcome to come, I would love it if you came to the house and got to see for yourself. I know there are decisions that have to be made, and, um, I'll abide by anyone that you come up with, um, but I just thought it would be good for you guys to see for yourself. I also sent to the mayor and Mr. Kennas, um, something from NOAA, which was a little alarming, and you also put your address in, and it showed by the year twenty-one fifty, which sounds like a really long time from now. But, um, my son-in-law's grandmother's a hundred and five, so I look at it like that, she's a hundred and five, so that's not that much longer. Um, and it shows that my house is gonna be underwater by then. Um, so I really hope that something gets done before a hundred and five years. That, um, is moving towards, uh, a solution or longevity of enjoying where we are and where we live, and the town continuing to be able to collect our taxes and not being underwater.
Yes.
So, that's all, and, and thank you so much.
Thank you, and just know, we are working on things.
I know.
Process is, is very slow and long, and it's just, it's just, it's there. It's not a forgotten issue, let me say that.
Oh, I know, I, I, I know.
Okay?
And I appreciate it, thank you.
I know, thank you Kelly. Anyone else from the public? No, Mr. Bindik. Mr. Bindik, before you speak, I'd like to, uh, give you my condolences on the loss of your mother.
Yes.
Um, God bless, a hundred and one years old, that's fantastic, God bless.
Um, she was an amazing woman.
Sure.
She inspired me to be the person that I am today.
Good for you.
And her funeral will be on Monday, and we will celebrate her life. And thank you for the condolences, I appreciate that.
Just wanted you to make sure we knew about it, and we're sorry.
Thank you very much.
Very sorry.
Uh, Lacey Citizens, Mayor and Township Committee, um, couple things, I'm kinda glad to see that there are other people here who are now paying attention about our town's finances and asking questions, because we should be asking a lot of questions, not only with this body, with our schools, and also with the MUA. Um, I do have a question first for Veronica. What is the percentage of employee contributions to the health insurance for the employees here?
It varies, um, by employees, based on their salary, um, and then the cost of the insurance. So you can pay as much as thirty-five percent.
That's the max?
Of, yeah, of the cost of the insurance to as little as, I think, nine percent. It goes by cover, your salary, the coverage type you have, and the cost of the plan.
But what would you say the average is?
Probably like twenty percent.
Twenty percent?
Probably, yeah, when you, yeah, because most of the cops are paying thirty-five percent, all the cops are paying thirty-five percent, so when you average in that, they're the bulk of our departments.
Okay.
So they're paying probably close to twelve to fifteen thousand dollars a year.
Okay. I thought the family plan and all that was like a lot more.
Wait, the fam, well, again, I said twelve to fifteen is what the employee is paying, the plan is.
Oh, okay, 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 okay.
The plan itself is a lot more, you are correct.
Oh, okay, okay.
Yes.
Because I was, you know, um, looking at the MUA's budget, and I noticed there that their average contribution for all their employees was eighteen percent. And I know a lot of employees pay like thirty-five percent who are here on the town. The reason why I'm bringing this up, and I'm looking at all these figures now, is, you know, I have a real problem, as I've stated last year, and again this year, with the nine-hundred-and-eighty-thousand dollars that was taken from the MUA's funds that they had in reserve, and instead were given to our poorly performing school district, which really doesn't deserve that money, because, well, the people who are running it have done a terrible job, and I don't believe in rewarding individuals who are not performing at their highest level. So, the other thing I wanted to bring up is, what about privatizing the MUA?
That, that has been discussed in the past.
Well, the issue is, is that, you know, we won't be able to take this money, you know, that we're, we're taking from the MUA for our little pet projects or things that we might feel are important. The issue that I have with this is, um, you know, I, I have serious conflict issues with what has happened the last two years or what you have done. Basically, I think that the MUA, if they have any money left over, should be returning that to the ratepayer, because the people in our community are suffering. I just found out that twenty-nine percent of our households are on food stamps. I mean, when I found that out, I'm just like, oh my god, here, our schools are raising our property taxes by ten percent, and these people are gonna be leaving their houses. I know people who were at the meetings who said they're not gonna be able to live here any longer, and it's like, you know, where is this ever going to end? And, you know, we do have financial crises, happens, and you learn to adjust to those. We don't do things extreme to appease certain bodies, and that is the problem that I have with all this, because I have worked in government for a very long time, and it's amazing what you can do when you have to. I've done it.
Mr. Bindik, do you want?
Yes.
By law, the MUA is required to put aside five percent of their operating costs every year for use by the meanest of.
I'm very aware of that.
And then it just goes back into their surplus, and they start their budget cycle over again, and they put five percent. We have never taken it at all.
I know, I'm very, I am very familiar with.
So it's not like it goes back to the ratepayers.
No, no, but what I'm saying is, is that if they have these reserves, which I know that they do, and people in our town are struggling, you realize that giving it to the school doesn't affect everybody in this town. A lot of people don't have kids in our schools.
That shouldn't, it shouldn't.
Yes, it should be, of course, because you're, you work for the school district.
What is, what is that, one thing has nothing to do with the other, because that doesn't, the money that was given to them last year was to save jobs. It saved people's jobs.
Yeah, but you see, this is the issue that I have. I'm a businessman, okay?
Right.
I don't look at things about saving jobs. You're working for me.
We're a community.
No, 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 let me finish. You're working for me and every other taxpayer in this town.
Right.
You're supposed to be running this like a business, there's a bottom line, right?
Yes.
So basically, we need to look at the people's money in our community. We have a huge, we've had serious years now of high inflation, okay?
Mm-hmm.
Right, we all know it, go shopping in the stores. People are struggling. So, our government body's doing things, and you see, I'm not interested in protecting the jobs of the friends and family.
Well, that doesn't, then you're not a very good community member.
No, no.
You're not a very good community member.
You know what, I'm a good, I'm a good community member.
Because as a community, we're supposed to work together and try to take care of each other, and not rip each other apart and take us down a dead hill.
That is not the point that I'm making.
Yes, it is the point.
No, it isn't. The mass majority of this town does not work for the school district or for this town.
But they raise their children that go to these schools, so they want.
Some of them do.
They want these teachers to be saved, their jobs to be saved.
No, no, I want the school district to be highly performing. That's what I want.
I want that too, but you know what?
Right.
Everything doesn't come to us the way we want it, and we have to help one another. We have to.
So what is your solution? So what is the solution to the problem? Mediocrity is what we're supposed to accept?
No, not mediocrity. Listen, they can't be blamed for everything that's happened to them, okay? They cannot be.
I'm not saying that.
You have to go, you have to go to the source.
I agree, but you know what, when you have six years that you know that this is happening, and you do nothing, and you keep putting your head in the sand.
So we keep punishing the children for that then?
No.
Because that's who's paying the price.
I'm not saying punishing.
That's who's gonna pay the price if we didn't hire back those teachers.
You know what? I spoke at the meeting, and I asked the teachers, what are you giving back? You're still gonna have your jobs. Are you giving up your raises? Are you, are you giving up, uh, your longevity increases? Are you giving up your step increases? And they all sat there silent. They're all benefiting from this while the rest of us are suffering. It is wrong.
I don't agree.
I know you don't agree, you work for the school.
It has nothing, one thing has nothing to do with the other.
No, 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 it does have something to do with it.
I'm a part-time employee, I don't, I do not get benefits or any of that stuff, nor do I get them from the town, even though people seem to think we have the free cars, free gases, free everything, you know?
Okay, so.
We don't have any of that.
On another note, um, Mr. Cattalo said that the Tombs River Schools, you know, that, uh, they filed a lawsuit. The great thing about the Tombs River School District is you, and they unanimously voted to not raise their taxes by nine-point-nine percent. That school board actually cares about the taxpayers and the struggling people in their town, and I am very disappointed, very.
I'm hurt for everybody myself.
Right.
I own two homes in this town, I'm affected by all of it myself.
You are, but you're lucky to have two homes. There are people in our town who can't even afford.
I'm not lucky to have two homes.
Well, that's your choice.
Mr. Bindik, I, I understand your point, but the school board, much like us, we, you have, us five vote on the budget. The school board has, I don't know, nine members, seven members, they vote on the budget. So it, they are the ones making the decisions on how the budgets run. If they wanna cut the health insurance or negotiate harder with the teachers.
No, no, I understand.
Or whatever, it's their, it's their responsibility, it's their job to do it.
But you gave them money. Okay, I'm sorry, you opened up this whole can of worms over the last two years.
No, we didn't. I said this at last, my, my final comments at the end of last meeting were the same. Essentially, the schools, uh, the township and, uh, the MUA are essentially, they're taxing authorities. They're, they, they could all be in the same pot for all, like, you know, for all I care. So it really doesn't make much difference to me, um, where, where the money gets pulled from in order to, you know, fix the budget somewheres else.
Yes. Well, Mr. Lor, you made a comment tonight about people wanting to live here, you know, in a nice town. Well, I came here nineteen years ago because the taxes were low, and they're no longer low. With the school increase going up, like, they're high now, so the benefits of living here are going away for people like myself. You know, I don't ask very much out of the town, very little. I just wanna live in a safe community where I can go, and I wanna pay low taxes. That's, that's really what's important to me and to a lot of other people in our community. And unfortunately, we seem to be going off on something, and this isn't gonna end, because next year it's gonna be worse, and there's gonna be more problems. Yes, exactly. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, Mr. Bindik made a statement here, twenty percent of people in Lacey Township.
Twenty-nine.
Twenty-nine, well, I, he's made that statement at a school board meeting that I saw. So I contacted Tracy Meskel, Dr. Tracy Meskel, she's Director of Human Services for Ocean County. She gave me the numbers, so I wanna give you the numbers. Five-point-seven percent of Lacey Township residents are living in poverty. This is, because they handle this, they have the stats. One-point-seven percent, one-point-seven percent currently are on food stamps. So, the number of twenty-nine percent, I'm not sure where he gets that from, but these are the actual numbers.
Thank you, Mr. Bindik.
Uh, Mr. Bindik, I'll be happy to email it to you.
Anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Not this crap.
Yes, please, come up. Barry, just, Barry, Mr. Bindik, just don't forget your signs, I don't, okay.
Since he brought up the fact that people are struggling. Karen Hall, I live at thirty-eight South Street across from Hebrew Park.
We're not allowed to pick addresses.
I am gonna be seventy-eight years old. My property taxes right now are fifteen thousand dollars a year. I can't afford that. This town is forcing me to get out. And, that's not the new tax rate, I'm sure it's gone up. That block, uh, Hebrew Park, two or three years ago, they decided to make it commercial property, because of the auto body shop. It has been there over fifty years.
Okay, that property has always been C-150 highway business zone. Yes, it was, my brother.
Tax is commercial.
It's not taxed as commercial. You were taxed as a residential home because you're a residential use.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
You can go downstairs and see.
So my property's fifteen thousand dollars taxed, is it fair?
I don't know what your property taxes are off the top of my head, you can, you can go and speak with the tax assessor's office, but you are a residential property, you're taxed as residential in a commercial zone. In order for you to turn that into a commercial business, you need to go back to the planning board to get approval to do that.
I don't want commercial.
I know, but you couldn't sell that and list it as a commercial piece of. I, I'm trying to explain to you the, the law. You, you're running it as a residential, to, in order to convert that to commercial, you'd have to go to the board to get permission, because you've always used it as residential, so you're only being taxed as residential. I lived in the same zone for twenty-eight years of my life on the same street as you, so I'm familiar with it.
How do you expect people to survive paying that type of taxes?
I, you could see the tax assessor, maybe he has some misinformation on your, your record or your property record card that you could go over with him, he could make an adjustment.
Yeah, we'll see, I'll be here tomorrow.
Thank you for your comments. Is there anybody else that would like to, uh, speak from the audience?
Seeing none, motion.
Oh, we got in at the last one.
Linda Miller for Kevitt.
Hi.
All right, so someone mentioned that we should all work together.
That's right, I mentioned it.
Well, it doesn't sound like we're working together.
No, it surely doesn't.
Because people come to the microphone and they get talked down.
I don't think so.
Well, Veronica's a little loud.
Well, my voice has always been loud, my voice carries.
She's the same, she's always the same way, twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week.
Right, okay, but it does scare people.
Well, I'm not scared.
Well, you don't have to be scared, you're on that side.
Her husband's, her husband's not afraid, her brother's not afraid, I don't know.
It's a little intimidating standing up there, no matter who's talking, so.
It doesn't, right.
Let's move on.
I didn't prepare anything.
Oh.
I, I do, I do, um, agree a lot with Mr. Bindik, especially about what's happened with school, and, I know this isn't the school board, um, I actually spoke there, when I spoke there, people were bounding, pounding on tables, and the, the teachers, they were out of control. Our school system is not good. It's way down on the list of schools. So, like Mr. Bindik said, we, you, you gave money to a failing school system, and nine-point-nine percent more on everybody's taxes is a lot of money.
I agree.
So, everybody wants to come and live here. I don't think that's the case, because people do wanna come and live in a town where the school systems are good. And this school system is not good. Right? So, uh, that's all I have to say. Our community is suffering because of our school system.
Could I say something there?
And I could have used some of that money, given back to me for the MUA. It's a lot of money. And if people are in, in poverty here, uh, it, maybe they should have gotten some of the money, not the school system, because the school system isn't getting fixed.
I'll just repeat myself, we're a community and we have to help one another.
Well, why aren't we helping someone?
Last year we saved thirty jobs, this year we saved more.
Okay.
So that, that was the purpose of giving the money.
Okay.
The stipulations was completely for that, not for raises, not for anybody to buy this. It was to save jobs.
I thought it was for the children.
It is for the children, because if you save the jobs, okay, it'll make smaller classrooms. If we save the jobs, we'll make smaller classrooms. Right now, our teachers are dealing with 30 students per classroom. If we didn't save these jobs, we'd be probably close to 40 students in each classroom. That's all I'm going to say on it. I'm sorry. I'm sorry you don't agree. That's all I can say. I'm sorry you don't agree.
Okay.
Thank you.
Sorry you said that.
Thank you for your comments. Go ahead, Ms. Mijic.
Regina DeSens, Sunset Drive, Sunrise Beach. Since I am a county commissioner candidate, I have been attending a lot of county meetings. And one of the county meetings I've been attending is the Board of Social Services. Mr. Bindek was off by 9%, but the figure I got for the SNAP program is, which is the Nutritional Assistance Program, was 20%. So that's 1 in 5 Lacey residents are on food stamps or some kind of nutritional assistance. And you guys all know that Food Bank of ours is extremely busy, and I believe there's close to 300 families monthly receiving food from the Food Bank. So if you think those people that can't afford food can afford 9.9% taxes, plus whatever you raise us, plus what the county's raising us, and everything else, it's absurd. There, there's going to be for-sale signs going up like crazy next year.
Thank you for your comments. Anyone else from the floor? Sure, you're welcome to come back up.
I don't know about that, Regina. You know, sibling rivalry, you know? I'm timing him as well.
Bob Loray. I just want to make a quick comment as far as clarity, because I don't want anybody misinterpreting what I said. And Mr. Bindek, I've complimented him many a times on some of the research he does. No way do I want anybody to think that I'm standing up here saying Lacey Township is a dead roses. It's a great place to live. Things are not perfect. And when I say working together, it's all yous coming up here to the mic, bringing things forward, as long as them listening, and you work together. Everything doesn't work out the way we want. But I don't want anybody getting a misinterpretation that I think everything's great. My taxes have gone up. Okay, who was up here before? I know she's very passionate about it. You know, she's, as, as we all get older, it gets tougher and tougher. But it's one thing with a fixed budget, and we all look at it. Well, even whether we're on a fixed budget when we're older or we're bringing up a family, when you're bringing up a family, sometimes things hit you faster than they do when we're on a fixed budget, because of kids, school, a lot of different things. So we're all in this together.
That's right.
And I just look at the town as a whole, want to compare it to other places in this state. And that's what I want us all to appreciate, because I appreciate everything that comes from this side as far as that side. Because we're all here for, to make things better. Because you come out of Ware Town into Lacey, there's a big difference. You come out of Bayville or Berkeley into Lacey, there's a big difference. So all we can do is work together. We got a tremendous amount of services. We don't all use them all. Nobody does, but they're there if you want to use them. And all we can keep doing is bringing our issues forward, not talking down to each other, which does happen. And there is one big thing I have noticed, and I looked around at most of the people, because tonight started out very nice with a lot of thank yous. I've heard people in the past say things are posted on the bulletin board outside. While I keep looking for the sign that says, which I, sometimes I think I walk into motor vehicle, it does not say out there, "Don't smile past this door."
Thanks, Bob. Is there anyone else from the public that would like to speak?
Seeing none, motion to close the floor.
Second.
Oh, wait.
A little late, but that's okay.
We'll let her. She's got a question. She's got a question.
They'll go to the TV video.
My name's Arlene Berkowitz. I live on Beach Boulevard. Does anybody know what percentage of households have children? Beach Boulevard doesn't have children. We had one family move in. But to the end of Beach Boulevard, it is that long strip.
Right.
Most of the time, if you're here full-time or in the winter, a lot of those houses are empty.
Right.
Most of the time.
I don't know, I don't know the number offhand, but... Yeah, I don't know. But we can look into it. I'll check it out for Arlene, okay? Thank you. Yes. See, you second thought about it. You second thought after she came up.
I actually came here tonight because I wanted to know if there really was a pedestrian